Meeting for Monday, August 21st, 2023 to order at this time. We'll first ask Ms. Sharon Griffin to provide us with the invocation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, bless our teachers and our students as they return to the classroom for the upcoming school year. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, please hear us in a moment of silence. Thank you.
At this time, we ask Cedric Vilalaba-Bardugo to come up and lead us in the Onslow County, from the Onslow County 4-H Youth Delegate, he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now just recognize a few of the elected officials with us this evening. Alderman from North Toppsil Beach, Mr. Richard Grant, Sheriff Chris Thomas, and Mayor from Holly Ridge, Mr. Jeff Wenzel. We appreciate y'all being here tonight. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. At this time, we need a motion for the adoption of tonight's agenda. Motion and a second, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now approval of the items on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion and a second, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda is approved. I will turn this over to Ms. Griffin for public comment.
Thank you, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. We do have one citizen who has signed up to speak during our public comment period. We do ask that our citizens limit their comment to exactly five minutes, and then they take their seat, and please address the Board as a whole and no one Commissioner as an individual. At this time, I would like to recognize Mayor Jeff Wenzel of 315 Rosebud Lane.
Good evening. It's good to see you guys. Just wanted to give a quick update on what's been happening lately in Holly Ridge. First of all, we have our big Liberty Festival, which is Labor Day Saturday, so the 2nd of September, and it's starting at 3:00 PM, and we'll go through the fireworks, so through the dark. We're excited. We have food trucks, we have a bunch of craft vendors, events for kids, and so it's going to be a great time for all, and we will have the best fireworks in Onslow County on Labor Day Saturday. The only ones, by the way, but anyway. Just a technicality. Also, want to give an update. We've been working hard on getting our roads evaluated. We have over seventeen miles of roads in Holly Ridge that we maintain, and we've let the roads get in, some of the roads get into disarray, disrepair, and so we have partnered with Withers Ravenol, and they've come out and they've done an assessment, and they're going to be helping us use the POW bill as well as other funds to get the immediate roads that need to be taken care of, and then get us on a set plan so that we don't get into the shape that we're currently in, and so we're very excited about that. Camp Davis Industrial Park is rolling right along. We are actively closing on lots in Phase Two, and so that's very exciting, and UPS is still on track to be open for their huge distribution center next summer, and so we're excited about that. Elections for three of our five council positions will be this November, and we are excited. We actually have nine candidates for the three positions, so we have all three positions of the incumbents are running for reelection, and there's six additional ones who have thrown their name in the hat, and so we're actually pretty excited about that, and I'm starting to see T-shirts and magnetic signs appear around town as well, too, and so they're actually campaigning, and I'm excited for that for having people who are interested in serving on the Town Council of Holly Ridge. I do, this probably be the last meeting that I'm here where we had the county manager, and so I would like to say thank you for all that you have helped Holly Ridge with. Thank you for what you've done for Onslow County, and my daughter is over there keeping herself busy by weaving a bracelet with one of those rainbow blooms. It'll probably be for you if we stay long enough. But anyway, we really appreciate what you've done and the work that you've done, and we look forward to seeing what you do in the future as well, too, and supporting Onslow County amongst your other endeavors. So that's all that I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wenzel, and that concludes our public comment period.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Thank you, Mayor Wenzel. And Ms. Griffin, I guess you'll take over and lead us through the next six or seven public hearings.
Yes, in fact, we have seven public hearings this evening, so we do have a variety of items that we're going to take to the public this evening. Our first is the Motorsports Economic Development Grant Agreement, and our wonderful grant manager, Jennifer Bumgarner, is going to present the staff background.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I am bringing to you today a little reminder of what we're going to talk about. The North Carolina General Assembly authorized funds to be appropriated as the Motorsport Economic Development Grants to local governments to be utilized by qualifying race venues in North Carolina. Coastal Plains Dragway applied for and was awarded funds. On June 5th, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners accepted the Motorsport Economic Development Grant in the amount of $485,000. The Motorsport Economic Development Grant Agreement presented to you today establishes the terms, conditions, and respective responsibilities of the county and grant subrecipient Coastal Plains Dragway. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the Motorsport Economic Development Grant Agreement, and if approved, authorize the county manager to sign on behalf of the county. I will turn that back over to Ms. Griffin.
Thank you so much, Jennifer, and at this time, we will open the public hearing. No one has signed up. Is the applicant present? Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing, and it is now available for the Commissioners to discuss.
Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. We carries.
Fantastic. Our next public hearing is on the 2017 Onslow County Rabies Post Exposure Management Rule repeal, and these next three are going to be with our Public Health Director, Ms. Chrissy Hoover, who will give our staff background.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The first rule that we have for review this evening is the Onslow County Rabies Post Exposure Management Rule. This rule was adopted several years back in the absence of state law. Statewide Rabies Post Exposure Management Rules became effective October 1 of 2017, with North Carolina General Statute 130A 197 being that rule. With the implementation of a statewide Rabies Post Exposure Management Rule, the repeal of the local Onslow County Rabies Post Exposure Management Rule is recommended. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those, but tonight, we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners, acting as the Board of Health, consider repealing the 2017 Onslow County Post Exposure Management Rule.
Thank you so much, Chrissy. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for the 2017 Onslow County Rabies Post Management Exposure Rule repeal, and we have no one signed up to speak for this public hearing, so we will close the public hearing. It's now available for Commissioner consideration.
Motion to approve. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next rule that we have for review is a 1993 Onslow County Smoking Control Rule. This rule was adopted September 21 of 1993, became effective on October 1 of 1993, and it addresses regulation of smoking in several places, including eating establishments. In 2010, the state adopted rules that also enforce tobacco regulation and smoking regulation in many areas, including bars and restaurants, and they also have enforcement actions. With the adoption of the 2010 statewide rules, we believe that it is appropriate that we repeal the local rules that we have on this same topic, and therefore, tonight, we're respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners, acting as the Board of Health, consider the repeal of the 1993 Onslow County Smoking Control Rules, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you so much, Chrissy. At this time, we will open the public hearing for the repeal of the 1993 Onslow County Smoking Control Rule. No one has signed up to speak. At this time, we'll close the public hearing, and it's now available for Commissioner consideration.
Motion to approve. We have a motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last public health rule that we have tonight is an Onslow County Ordinance Regarding Tattooists. This tattooist rule came about in 1981, and it was in the absence of state law. Statewide tattoo regulations became effective April 1, 1995, with North Carolina General Statute 130A 283. With the implementation of the statewide tattoo rules, the Onslow County 1981 Tattooist Ordinance is recommended to be repealed, and we have reviewed this as part of an evaluation of local rules that we did earlier this year. Tonight, we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners, acting as the Board of Health, consider repealing the 1981 Onslow County Ordinance, Chapter Eight, Licenses and Business Regulations, Article Six, Tattooists. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you so much, Chrissy. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for the Onslow County Tattooist Ordinance repeal, Chapter Eight. No one has signed up, so at this time, we'll close the public hearing, and it is now available for Commissioner consideration. I believe that even if it passes by majority, we will bring this back to you again because it will require a second reading. Is that correct?
That's right, because it's an ordinance. The first reading of an ordinance has to be unanimous in order to pass unless a public hearing is required. It's not required in this case. We advertise the public hearing just to give the public input, but since it's not required, we'll have a second reading if this, if a majority passes it tonight. So you'll see this on another agenda, just no surprise there.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chrissy. Our next public hearing is PREZ 2023-00010, the public hearing on the Newman-Holden rezoning, and we have our Planning Director, Mr. Carter Metcalf, who will give our staff background.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and County Commissioners. Our first of three rezoning hearings tonight, that will be PREZ 2023, number 10, the Newman-Holden rezoning request. The applicant, the owner are the same, is Ms. Kristy K. Newman-Holden. So an overview of the request is proposed changes from Community Business, or CB, to Residential 8 Manufactured, or R A M, and this would change it from a commercial zoning district to a residential. Tax map number is 1309-21, located at 122 McCausley Road in the Swansboro Township, and it is .48 acres. To continue the summary, it's currently vacant. There's few trees on the lot. There is two different water lines in the area, one on McCausley Road, which is a four-inch, and then a six-inch on Wasa Water Main along Bear Creek Road. The area is served by individual septic systems, and the fire department is the Northeast Onslow Fire District with an ISO rating of four. Traffic there, there's no counts from McCausley Road, but our most recent one on Bear Creek was in 2016, at 4,600. Staff estimates capacity at over 13,000. Here you can see the zoning districts. You can see there's a little pocket of community business there at McCausley Road, with two different pinks going on, and so the one to the right there of McCausley Road is R-8M, and the pink to the left is R-15. And then you see the green there is the RA. Briefly review these zoning districts. In community business, no minimum lot size. This goal is to accommodate small-scale retail and service businesses that, again, service that immediate community. And the goal is that it's at the intersection of major collectors. Now, to compare with R A M, minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet, and its purpose is to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family, multifamily developments, and a specifically manufactured housing. The comprehensive plan details this property as medium-density residential, and that purpose is to, again, allow for single-family residential and multifamily densities at that medium-density scale. We'll look at the future land use map. Let's see, that whole area is medium-density residential, and there off to the west is some conservation. Conservation zoning, just the future land use designation. So it may be considered reasonable and in the public interest because it is similar to the situated area. That whole street is R A M, and it aligns with four different policies in Onslow County Comprehensive Plan. Could be viewed as unreasonable because R A M technically is a high-density residential category, while the future land use has it as medium. However, it's still a move towards more compliance because it's currently commercial, and we're moving towards residential, or at least the proposals to do that. At Planning Board, we had it at June 1, and Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval. Staff received only an email prior to the meeting stating the individual is concerned about a manufactured home park being established on the property. However, the property is only .48 acres. And then one citizen spoke in favor of the request, which was the applicant herself. Look at the property real briefly. Early, you can see the surrounding area. It's a lot of residential. Then I'll look a little closer at the lot, and you'll see it's currently vacant. And so tonight, the staff requests, oh, and one more picture, let you see the lot from on the ground. The staff respectfully requests that the chairman be authorized to approve or sign for any necessary documents, and we consider a consistency statement as well as a rezoning request. And this concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you so much, Carter. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for PREZ-2023-00010, the Newman-Holden rezoning, and we do have the applicant having signed up to speak. If you would like to approach the mic, Ms. Kristy Newman-Holden of 191 McCausley Road in Hubert.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. One correction, Carter, is that the address is actually 112 McCausley Road, not 122, so that will need to be corrected.
Okay, thank you, and if you'll sit on the front row in case we have questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Carter, did you want to add anything to the correction or the impact of that?
So that will not impact what we'll need to do tonight, and the applicant is corrected as 112 McCausley Road. That was correct in your staff report. It was just not correct on the presentation. But the rezoning is for the specific tax map parcel number, which is correct, and so that does not affect anything legally or technically we should be able to do.
So it is 112?
112, yes, correct.
Okay, okay. At this time, we'll close the public hearing for PREZ 2023-00010 for the Newman-Holden rezoning, and it's available for the Commissioners' consideration.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Our next public hearing is for PREZ-2023-00011, public hearing on the Starzinski-Rusus rezoning.
Good evening again. Our next item is the Starzinski-Rusus rezoning. The applicant is Michael Rusus with Rusus Properties LLC, and the owner is John J. Starzinski. So an overview of request number 11 is proposed changes from RA to Highway Business, Rural Agriculture to HB, tax map number 323-109, and is located off US Highway 258, and there's no address, and is .431 acres. Property is currently vacant, residential, so there is a structure on the property, and there is a six-inch on Wasa water line along Richland's Highway, as well as two other on Wasa water lines on Pony Farm, and then there's a six-inch on Wasa sewer force main on Pony Farm as well. Fire District is Southwest Onslow with a fire district of three. Our most recent traffic data from 2018 on the 258 has an annual average daily traffic of 31,000. Staff estimates capacity slightly over 47,000. Here you can see the location of the property, so as you're leaving here today, if you got to turn left at the intersection, go right by it. And there is currently RA. You can see Highway Business in the area, as well as R-15, and the office and institutional, which is most of Burton Park. And compare the two districts, RA, minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. Purpose is maintain a rural development pattern, preserves agricultural character of the county, while accommodating low-density single-family and limited commercial. While Highway Business has no minimum lot size, and its purpose is to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses, and it's to foster economic development along our major highway corridors. Now, to look at the comprehensive plan, identify the property as area-wide commercial activity center. Now, this is the same designation as also as Burton Park. We're going to look at the map in a minute, and this is provide for land uses that are focused on automotive. Again, you have high trip counts and have a lot of traffic at these sites. So look at the map. We identified Burton Park, and again, part of Richland's Highway at the time in, you know, the late 2000s when we did the map, as well as kind of medium-density residential and high-density residential around this area. That was to kind of be a growth area for the county. Proposed rezoning may be considered reasonable due to six policies in the Comprehensive Plan, and it could be seen as unreasonable as because an adjacent AWCAC could be competitive with Burton Park. Planning Board was held at June 1. Onslow County Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval. Three citizens spoke out against the concern. They all lived along Amon Lane. It is a dirt easement. They're just past the site. Their concerns were around traffic, folks potentially missing their turn and turning down that street. They already have no outlet signs posted. Concerns were around noise and light for any new development, and stormwater being contained on site. Some of this would be mitigated by the zoning ordinance, such as noise and light pollution could be, and then as well, stormwater permit would have to be obtained. The applicant did speak regarding those citizens' concerns, and I believe is here tonight as well.
Thank you so much, Carter. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for the Starzinski-Rusus rezoning, and we do have one person who has signed up to speak. I believe it's the applicant, Mr. Michael Rusus of 2065 Thomas Bishop Lane in Virginia Beach.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Metcalf did an excellent job, as always, so I don't really have anything to add, but happy to answer any questions anyone may have. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to sit on the front row until the Commissioners have finished considering this item. At this time, we will close the public hearing for the Starzinski-Rusus rezoning. It's available now for Commissioner consideration.
Motion to approve. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Chairman Foster and Commissioners, we have one more public hearing, and this is on the Burton-Rusus rezoning, PREZ-2023-00012, and we'll call on Carter Metcalf once again.
All right, our final rezoning for the night, and it's the Burton-Rusus rezoning. Applicant is Michael Rusus with Rusus Properties LLC, and the property owner is Ms. Alice Burton. To review request number 12, it's the same request of RA to Highway Business, from Rural Agriculture to Highway Business. That tax map number is 322-6. It's located on the intersection of US Highway 258 and Pony Farm, has an address of 1125 Pony Farm Road, and the rezoning area is 22.34 acres. I'm going to look at kind of the utilities and the services for that area. There is a residential structure there on the property. There's a six-inch on Wasa water line and a four- and eight-inch on Wasa water line along Pony Farm Road. There is a six-inch on Wasa sewer force main on Pony Farm, same fire district of Southwest Onslow, and the traffic there is from 258, with in 2018, an annual average daily trip count of 31,000, an estimated staff capacity of 47,000. So now to look at the map, it's the adjacent property, the one that was just considered in the previous request. See the properties, RA, there with the HB at the intersection. To review the two districts, RA, its purpose to maintain a rural development pattern that's preserving the agricultural character of the county, while accommodating, again, limited low-density single-family. While Highway Business has no minimum lot size, and is to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our highway corridors. The comprehensive plan detailed the property as well as the area-wide commercial activity center, which case it is intended for automotive uses, and that have a high travel commercial nature to them. The property is also identified as medium-density residential, accommodated for medium-density single-family residential developments and planned multifamily. I'll look at a map. Of the property shows it spanning those two future land use categories. It's that AWCAC is to the right, and then medium-density residential to the left. The proposal may be considered reasonable in the public interest by several policies in the Comprehensive Plan, and some of these that are incorporated now are because of that medium-density residential district, and could be considered reasonable because it would be a competitive AWCAC, or it could be viewed as an extension of the existing AWCAC. June 1 is when the Onslow County Planning Board met, voted unanimously to approve it. Two citizens spoke regarding the request. Those two citizens also spoke in the previous rezoning, and simply stated their concerns were about traffic and that it was not technically on a highway. Now, we will look at this property, and that's from the larger viewpoint. You can see it's located mostly forested there, right across from the intersection. Look at it a little closer there. And then there is a picture of the site with the house.
Thank you so much, Carter. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for PREZ-2023-00012, the Burton-Rusus rezoning. One person has signed up to speak. It is the applicant, Mr. Michael Rusus. If you would like to approach, or you can just remain there if you're here for questions. Okay, great. At this time, I'll close the public hearing, and the items available for Commissioner consideration.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just had a couple of questions. Reading over the notes from the Planning Board minutes, Mr. Rusus, you said, and I'm assuming from that picture we could see, that there's a electrical line that divides the site, so that's going to limit how much you can actually develop. Is the development you're intending to go to the Pony Farm end or toward the 258 end?
Towards the 258 end.
Okay, so the smaller piece, actually, it looks like.
So it's...
Can you go to that slide?
Yeah, it's the piece that's between the overhead electrical lines and the adjacent property that was just approved for rezoning.
Then you said you were going to subdivide it.
And it will be subdivided, you know, the subdivision will have to take into account that, I'm sorry, I don't have a cursor to show you this more clearly, but there will need to be access off Pony Farm Road, so the subdivision will capture that Pony Farm Road frontage. But yeah, the primary piece is the portion that faces Richland's Highway.
So to clarify, what I hear you saying then is the portion that is more on Pony Farm Road, then you're thinking of making that a residential? Farm Road than you're thinking of making that a residential area?
You know, ultimately.
When you said subdivision, or were you talking about just subdividing the property?
I would subdivide and acquire the portion I'm describing, which is the piece that fronts Richland's and then an access piece on Pony Farm Road, and then the existing owner, Ms. Burton, would be free to develop how she would want to.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Keep on rolling, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you, Chairman Foster. Our next item is our 800 megahertz radio system service agreement with our 911 Division Head, Ray Silence.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Onslow County contracted with Motorola Solutions in 2012 and designed and build a P25 800 megahertz radio system to be used by all emergency agencies that provide service within Onslow County. The construction and implementation of this system cost the city of Jacksonville and Onslow County approximately $12 million. The radio system was completed and went into full operations in the second quarter of 2015. The initial maintenance ended in 2016, and the county was continued to enter into a maintenance agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated to provide coverage for 24/7 network monitoring, technical response, infrastructure repair on two core sites, five tower sites, 15 dispatch console radios that are all part of the radio system. The Department of Emergency Services, 911 Communication Division, is recommending the county to renew the maintenance agreement with Motorola Solutions for a price not to exceed $492,677.72, which was approved in the fiscal year 2024, or excuse me, 2023-24 budget. There are no recommended changes in the amount of the level of service under proposed agreement in this agreement in a five-year period. The total amount that we paid over a five-year period is $3,098,301.18. There is a non-appropriation clause in this agreement. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the approval of the maintenance service agreement with Motorola Solutions, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the contract on behalf of Onslow County.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I'm always the one with the questions, sorry. So sticker shock on the amount here, and I know we, I'm obviously not against having this because I know we need to have it up and running. Just out of curiosity, what's the life expectancy of that radio system?
The life expectancy of the radio system is ever how long we pay for the yearly maintenance and the SUA, which is the software upgrade.
Okay.
Right rail, initially, we signed a eight-year, what we call SUA agreement, and we've just started the software upgrade for this year. We're in it today. And as long as the piece is gonna be upgraded with the software, the grant took care of the microwave part of it, that I was here a couple meetings ago and got a grant for that, so that didn't cause the county taxpayers anything for that.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is that system would not need to be replaced anytime in the near future?
I would not say so, no, no.
Okay. It's just, holy cow, the maintenance suite, they got us over a barrel.
When they do.
I was doing the math.
When they do software updates, they replace equipment on those software upgrades.
That's good to know.
Hey Ray, being familiar with the radio system, this is actually pretty cheap as far as a maintenance program, and anybody knows that spending law enforcement and emergency rescue, that the communication system, the radios, the dispatch, the software updates, the programming of these radios, the maintain, to keep these radios is phenomenal, and the radio is our best friend as far as law enforcement and EMTs are concerned. And when I look at the cost of this, you know, I look, I realize this is pretty cheap. We had our system, and our system was more expensive than this, and we had to enter into three-year contracts to upgrade all our, especially the encrypted versions and things of that nature, so I'm fully supportive of this. I think it's, I think it's great, and we are getting it at a good price, and we need it. We definitely need to upkeep our communication systems above board, because as you know, anytime during an emergency, the radios can go out, the software updates glitch all the time, you can't get the right frequencies and et cetera, and the list of problems go on. And to add, to have them there capable of doing that and to respond, to fix these things and to maintain our equipment, your equipment will last a very long time with the proper upkeep and software updates, so I commend you for it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
So the software updates, new equipment as well comes with that from what you said.
Yes, sir, doing the software, yes, sir.
That's interesting. Good deal, thank you.
And just to follow up because of what Robin said, I'm not against it. I just wanted, I guess, since I know citizens watch this, to understand that there is quite a big investment in what we do to keep them safe through the system, so use of the system, that's all. So thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silence.
Thank you, Ray. Our next item is our Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina Administrative Services and Specific and Aggregate Stop Loss Renewals with our HR Director, Ms. Joy Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman Foster, Vice Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Onslow County provides health insurance to eligible employees by partnering with Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina as our third-party administrator. As a self-insured health plan, Blue Cross and Blue Shield provides claims administration for medical and pharmacy services and also provides both our aggregate and specific stop-loss coverage. Every fiscal year, the county reviews the renewal agreement with Blue Cross and Blue Shield to negotiate agreeable terms and fees that provide the most benefit to county employees while remaining financially responsible. Administrative fees for medical and pharmacy services for this fiscal year will remain unchanged at $12.93 per member per month. Specific stop-loss fees will remain unchanged at $29.01 per member per month. Aggregate stop-loss fees will remain unchanged at $2.90 per member per month. The documents presented to you for consideration are effective fiscal year 2023 through 2024 and reflect the fees mentioned above for medical and pharmacy service administration, specific stop-loss, and aggregate stop-loss. I am respectfully requesting the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the agreements with Blue Cross and Blue Shield for fiscal year 2023 through 2024 for the administration of our health plan and aggregate and specific stop-loss coverages to continue providing health plan benefits to eligible employees and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county. I am available to answer any questions that you guys have.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
In a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Joy.
Thank you.
Our next item is the American Rescue Plan Act grant for the Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging, and Clay Calhoun, our Senior Services Director, will present.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging has awarded Onslow County Senior Services $227,100 in supplemental funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, of 2021, and no local match is required. This funding will be used for the expansion of services in senior center operations, congregant nutrition services, health promotion, disease prevention, family caregiver respite services, and new housing initiatives and home improvements. I'm happy to answer any questions the Board may have, and it is respectfully requested that the Board consider approval of the Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging, ARPA grant funds, and authorize the county manager to sign and execute the associated contract documents.
Motion to approve. Motion.
Second.
In a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Clay. Our next item is the lease amendment and operating lease for Onslow Memorial Hospital, and this will be presented by our county attorney, Brett DeSelm.
Good evening. Onslow County owns the property on which Onslow Memorial Hospital is situated. In December of 2005, the county leased the hospital for a period of 50 years to the Onslow County Hospital Authority. The lease currently has approximately 33 and a half years remaining. Onslow County Hospital Authority is seeking to obtain additional funds through a loan backed by HUD, H-U-D, in order to address facility needs. In order to secure the additional financing, HUD is requiring that the hospital have a lease of 99 years. That is necessary, thus it is necessary for the county to extend the lease term for approximately 65 and a half years, setting a new expiration date of December 31st, 2021-21. Additionally, since Onslow County Hospital Authority obtains all of its revenues from Onslow Memorial Hospital, HUD is requiring the county approve the operating lease, and you'll see in your packet that operating lease is not in final form, there's some blanks, so there will be some non-substantive changes, non-substantive changes to that, that would need to be approved as part of that. And what we're asking is that the Board consider approval of the lease and the operating agreement, allowing the Chairman to sign after it's in final form, provided there are no substantive changes to those documents. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Also, members of Onslow County or Onslow Memorial Hospital here as well, answer any technical questions you have.
Motion to approve. Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Brett, I just want to ask you a question. Why, why is there, and I'm not against this, it's what I'm asking questions about, is they got 35 years, all the paperwork is not completed, is subject to change, so why are we in a rush to extend the lease until the paperwork is correct and presented to the Board as corrected?
Yeah, I think that, Dr. Pennin, can you answer that? I think that my understanding that there is a time-sensitive nature to get this closing completed, and the way I was informed about this is that from the hospital's attorneys, that it would cost the hospital additional funds if they were to extend this out any further, and you may be able to speak to that.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I'm not sure I can add a whole heck of a lot of extra color, to be honest with you. I think it's a chicken egg thing between HUD and trying to get the lease and all the puzzle pieces understood correctly. Under the original lease amendment, OCHA is actually on the hook for the debt, be it the hospital generates all the revenues, expenses, and operations for the sake of OCHA. So I think they're willing to just want to tighten some things up, and the attorneys are trying to allow for a couple of non-substantive things to still be input in the legal documents depending on us waiting on HUD responses on some things.
How long, how, how long is, well, what is the drop dead date that this has got to be done for now for HUD to do what they need to do?
That's a good question. I would, I'm not sure there actually is a date in concrete, but I would say casually a week or two.
You know, I'm reading this and I understand it very, to me, it's pretty, pretty clear. You're under a timeline, you need a 99-year lease, and you're trying to apply for an HUD loan. There are suspense states with that loan. I mean, it's pretty clear to me. You need this, it's under a timeframe where you won't be granted those, those loans for hospital repairs and things of that nature. And to be quite honest with you, that loan, I applaud the fact that you took the steps to seek a loan rather than to come see the Commissioners to try to help with the, I guess it's the best way to call it, is capital needs. So I understand that you're under a timeline, just as we were under a timeline with a different project here to get things done so that the legislators can approve certain amounts of money. So I understand perfectly what you're saying. And again, we need to sign this lease to guarantee that you have 99 years so that you can start the process with your HUD loan and then get you approved and get these, these repairs to your facilities started as soon as possible. Is that basically it in a nutshell?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought I understood. Thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none, we have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
A motion carries. Or, yeah, nay, ayes, right? Okay. Had to make sure I had my numbers, so thank you very much.
Did the clerk see the votes, or do we need to verify the votes? Can we do it by a raise of hands?
No or yea?
No.
No.
She said.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to budget amendments.
That's right, our final item, I'm sorry, it's not our final item, we have appointments, but Andrew Prince, our Finance Officer, will do our budget amendments.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. This evening, I have four budget amendments for you, B10 through B13. Related to the fiscal year 23-24 are requested for your approval. The first is to increase revenues and expenses related to funding that we receive from the American Rescue Plan Act awarded for peers to complete pregnancy prevention awareness. Budget Amendment Number 11 and 12 are to, for PFC Application 6, Amendment 3 allows for the reimbursement of the PFC Audit, PFC Program Administration. This amendment will allow Fund 68 to receive funds from Fund 69 to cover the required annual PFC audit for fiscal year 23 and for fiscal year 24. Budget Amendment Number 12 is for PFC Application 6, Amendment 3 allows for the reimbursement of PFC Program Administration. This amendment will allow a transfer of PFC funds to Fund 68 to cover the cost of required annual PFC audits for the fiscal year 23 and 24. Budget Amendment 13 increases revenue and expenditures to receive supplementary funding from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 awarded by the Eastern Carolina Council Area Agency on Aging to Senior Services, Senior Services to carry out activities under the Old Americans, Older Americans Act, excuse me. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the listed budget amendments, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Motion. Motion to approve. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. We do have a few appointments this evening for your consideration. First, the Onslow County Board of Adjustment. It is governed by the terms of the Onslow County Zoning Ordinance and North Carolina General Statute, Section 160D. Ms. Cindy Edwards has resigned as the at-large alternate effective August 1st, 2023. The Clerk's Office has received an application from Mr. Brent Youngblood for an appointment in the at-large alternate category. The application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the appointment of Mr. Brent Youngblood for the remaining three-year term expiring January 31st, 2024 in the at-large alternate category.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you. Our next appointment is for the Planning Board. The Planning Board consists of seven members, one appointee from each of the five townships in Onslow County, one appointee who may be recommended by developers, and one appointee who may be recommended by one or more environmental groups. Mr. Roger Brown, Swansboro Representative, and Mr. Walter Cotton, Jacksonville Representative, both have terms expiring July 31st, 2023. Both of these gentlemen have expressed an interest in serving in their respective categories and have provided a citizen participation application. No other individuals expressed an interest in serving, and all of these applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. We respectfully request that you consider the reappointment of Mr. Roger Brown for the Swansboro seat and Mr. Walter Cotton for the Jacksonville seat for three-year terms expiring July 31st, 2026.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Our final appointment for this evening is for the Library Board of Trustees. The Library Board of Trustees oversees operations of the Onslow County Public Library and offering programs and informational materials to the citizens. The Board of Trustees recommends policy to the Onslow County Board of Commissioners as an advisory council, and plans long-range goals for the library. The following individuals have expressed an interest in reappointment and have provided a citizen participation application that is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. Ms. Diana King Barnes for the Richlands category, a three-year term expiring June 30, 2026, and Ms. Peggy Garner for Stump Sound, also a three-year term expiring June 30, 2026. We respectfully request appointment of these two individuals in their respective categories for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
All right, for our managers' comments, I just wanted to let everybody know we are watching the Atlantic, which has started to activate and get a lot more interesting. There are no immediate threats, but we will continue to monitor this as storm season clearly has arrived. Also, our, of course, our Onslow County schools will start next week, and we just encourage everyone to watch out for the buses and for the little folks who will be out waiting for their buses early in the morning. That's all I have this evening unless you have questions, thank you.
Thank you. Start with Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Scott?
Thank you and good night.
Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I spent eight hours today at a hospital board retreat. It takes that long to try to figure out what the crazy situation of our healthcare system and our hospital is in. It's a, it's a challenge with the insurance issues and the patient issues, the providers who are challenging and many times don't want to come to Onslow County, Jacksonville, don't think they understand how great a place it is. But the hospital board is working hard to address the future of healthcare in Onslow County, and our Onslow County Hospital is, is so important. If our EMTs, our paramedics had to drive every patient to New Bern or Wilmington, it would cost Onslow County citizens huge amounts of money. We have to work hard to prepare the hospital for the future, and I can assure you that the Board is doing that, there's a strategic plan, and the hospital board is working hard to make sure that we can provide healthcare for the citizens of Onslow County in the future and today. So I appreciate everybody being here tonight, I hope you have a good evening, thank you.
Commissioner Price?
Just congratulations to those who received the Public Safety Awards this week, and thanks to all our first responders for all that they do to keep us safe, and that's it, have a good night.
Thank you sir. Commissioner Carpenter?
Just to clarify, on my vote regarding the hospital, I mean, I do definitely respect the fact that the organization is working to improve itself, and there's so much more that goes into, like, behind the scenes of why I voted what I did. However, the one thing that I felt as though I could not do was, although it's non-substantive is what you've said, as far as the things that were omitted from or not available to us in that document, I don't feel like it's the right thing for me to do to vote on something that is not actually completely being submitted, so I felt like I had to vote that way. So, other than that, it's great to be back, well, it's not great to be back in the hot weather, sorry, I just got back from Alaska and I miss that weather, I can't wait for winter. Have a great night.
Vice Chairman?
Just a couple of things. One, I want to echo with Chairman, excuse me, I promoted you, Commissioner Bennett, about the hospital. I'm impressed with the fact that they're taking out a HUD loan and not coming before the Commissioners and asking for money in terms of capital expenses, because, ooh, that'd be a tough one. And so I applaud what they're trying to do. One of the things that I had a chance to do, and I want to give a shout out to Mr. Kenyatta Irving from the NAACP, he invited me to speak on Saturday at about 18, or six o'clock, and it was a very interesting conversation that we had with members of the NAACP. It was, it was refreshing, it was encouraging, it was intelligent, they had some good questions for me, and I was able to share my background and my viewpoints, kind of like a town hall thing. And we talked from everything, from affordable housing, to racism, to diversity, and things of that nature, that I think the NAACP and myself share many of the same views, if not all the same views. And I just wanted to shout out to Mr. Kenyatta, he's a, if you never met him, he's a very interesting, intelligent man. He brings, he brings good ideas to the table. And we also talked about diversity in the sense of political parties. You know, we talked about, you know, we have so much bitterness between, let's say, the Republicans and the Democrats or whatever, you know, if someone doesn't have your opinion, or somebody doesn't believe in what you believe in, then you have a tendency to get upset with them, and you shouldn't. You know, we should be able to reach across the board and share ideas, no matter what a political affiliation that you're with. I mean, me personally, I really don't care. I'm a Republican, but I've always said is if you can convince me of something, if your idea is better than what I think it is, or what my ideas are, I'm going to listen to you. And we talked about maturity and listening to each other, accepting each other's viewpoints with respect, and I think that's what it's all about. You know, I could disagree with you completely based on my fundamental moral background, but I can at least respect your opinion and agree to disagree. So it was really a challenging meeting, it was very fun. He has invited me back, and I'm going to go back and speak, because some of the ideas they presented, especially in affordable housing, were very, very interesting and very eye-opening, to be quite honest with you. So if you're listening, Kenyatta, I appreciate you, thanks, and I look forward to speaking to you again soon. I'm going to save my comments again, this is now, we're in August, we have one more full month with Sharon, and I'm going to probably save my comments as we get closer to your kickoff date, so to speak, because there's a lot to be said. I mean, I've seen you grow and the things that you've done for this county, and everywhere I turn, all the people that at least talk to me, even out of the blue, people I don't know praise you, and they can't believe you're leaving, and they're saddened that you're leaving, but we'll get to that as we get closer. And the last thing I want to say, to my partner to the left here, the Chairman, UNC fan, all I know is September 3 starts football, this is the greatest time of the year, from August until December, actually until January, is this is college football and the season is heating up. And fortunately for the Chairman, we are not, my school, Florida State, playing UNC, but we will have to play NC State, Mr. Price's team, and we'll see how it goes. But I just want you to know, because I got to brag on my alma mater, that we are ranked eighth in the preseason poll. And I know Ben's sitting out there grinning, because I know you're ranked one from Georgia, I get that, but we don't have to play you either until the playoffs hopefully. But I just wanted to give a shout out to all the Seminoles out there, there's quite a few fans out here, and I'm going to end this by going, go Knolls.
Thank you Vice Chairman. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Joy Johnson, her first presentation to the Board tonight, excellent job, we appreciate what you are already doing and bringing to the table in Onslow County, we appreciate that. We also like to welcome Rose Outler to Onslow County Government, as she is working through her first meeting as our Deputy Clerk.
I want to make sure I had that wording correctly, so, so over there now, she's typing things about herself as I say them. So she's doing it, so she's doing an excellent job there, and we're glad to have her on Board as well. So just everybody needs to understand that just because there's votes that are split on the Board, doesn't mean anyone sitting up here is wrong in what they voted, it's just a difference of opinion or how they view things and see things, and what's important is that the Board moves forward cohesively and continue to work in the best interest of Onslow County. So we want to make sure we continue to do that from meeting to meeting, and we depend highly on the employees that lead this organization. It's a, it's a very large organization, a lot of moving parts, and we appreciate what everybody does and the part and role that they play in that. With that being said, I'm going to say go Hills, we're not in the top 25, when we are, we drop out within about three weeks. With that being said, motion to adjourn.
To move, second, bye.
We're adjourned.